For the May 26, 2015 City Council meeting will be election of a presiding officer. And that is done by motion, second, and then discussion if there is any, then a vote, and then that person will preside over the balance of the agenda. And with that, I'll entertain any motion to appoint a presiding officer for this meeting in the absence of the mayor.
I'll for Bob Execk.
Seconded and motioned. Motion and second, is there any discussion?
All those in favor?
All right, looks like we're getting ready to start here. The 5th of 26, 2015 Barksdale City Council meeting in order. And first order of business is to ask, is there anyone in the audience that has anything they want to bring to the council or discuss with us? Anyone in the audience got anything they want to say? If you're in line, then we'll go along to the salt bid. Larry, do you have any information on the salt bid?
I think Jessica would go. I don't have a copy of it, probably, but... This is another, they did the state, KECO and them did a statewide bid. And...
You think it's the color board they have?
This was statewide bid, and I would assume it's a quantity to make up our salt revenue for next year. And it would be a low...
Alexi, come in just in time. You got the floor, Jessica.
Right, perfect timing.
Who's the mayor?
The salt bid. This year, we participated in an online salt bid that was hosted by Kentucky counties and also Kentucky many cities this year participated, which was the first time that they invited the cities to also participate. And what this does is it allows all the cities and counties to bid out their salt quantities and have all salt bidders across this region do a bid, so that not each individual county can have to do that. So, who else is ready to get in here? So, the bid was held online, and KECO actually sponsored everything, put out an advertisement, held on May 7th at 1:00. And at the end of the day, at a set time, they closed the bid. And Cargill Inc. was the low bidder for Barstown's quantity. The amount we set aside was 200 tons of salt. We are not held to that amount, that's just our estimate how much we think we need. But we don't end up needing all of that amount, we're not obligated to purchase that. But what it does is it allows us to accept the bid, because last year, we were told by our vendor that they were no longer going to guarantee to sell to us. So, it kind of puts some smaller communities like ourselves in a little bit of a disadvantage towards being able to not be guaranteed salt, especially under high demand. But the price came in at $76.50 per ton. This was actually a pretty good price, I think we were paying around $80 this past year per ton. So, that's what this is. We just need, we recommend accept them and to be able to, as our supplier for this fiscal year.
Jessica, was this some type of auction or something? Because I see different bids.
Yes, it was an online auction. So, it's kind of like when you're bidding on something on eBay, it was held kind of much in the same way. All the suppliers had to be pre-serviced, so they had their bid certifications they submitted to KECO on the day of the bid, that said, "We're going to be participating in the bid." And again, they just kind of watched it. So, you could place a bid at 1:00, you could place a bid, you know, 20 minutes later and keep kind of out-bidding one another until the time of the bid closed. And whoever had the lowest bid at the end of that time, online, was then listed as the low bidder for that commodity. So, they were kind of doing that, there's probably, I don't know, maybe eight different bidders, you know, salt suppliers in our region of the United States that bid. And again, different ones were a low bidder for different communities, and kind of just depending on how they did their bid, what time they got in, and how quick they were checking all the different areas. But they did have to stay divided up into regions, or districts, groups. We were in group four, and that's just a grouping of other cities and counties in that little area, so it kind of bothered us. Didn't mean you couldn't bid on other cities outside of that group, but like I said, this was very, this was new for us. This was the first year that they'd invited the cities to join in on the online auction. KECO, I think, has been doing this auction, I would say around five years, four years. I had talked with Jim Wano, they participated last year. I think that might have been their first year that they participated. And they also participated this year, so that's basically how it went. Much very similar to eBay, you know, I mean, with the opening time and the closing time.
Well, if this chart that we got goes all the way back to, I think, the 13th, it's quite a bit cheaper now.
Yes, from the time they start, yes.
So, anybody else got any questions on the salt bid? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we sign a contract with, what was her name?
Cargill.
Cargill. I make a motion to accept Cargill as the supplier of our salt for $76.50 per ton.
My second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Anybody got any discussion on it? You going to repeat it? We're going to accept the bid of Carshol for the, including here.
For $76.50.
Everybody heard the motion made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. All right. Okay, Larry? Green?
Yes, sir.
You look like you're up with the... Okay, yeah. All right, we've got a change order for Billy Gilkey on Denbury Drive. Jeff?
I'm sorry, Mr. Knight. Jeff had some family gathering or ceremony to deal with tonight, so Eric's come, and Eric did the spreadsheet on this change order. It's a enterprise contract, and Billy Gilkey's near the end, and I'll give it to Eric. Ask any questions, gentlemen.
In planning and designing for, before the project started, we tried to account for as much detail as possible, but once we got into the project, it looks better on paper than when you're physically in the backyard. We turned into mostly the result of, if you flip here, the second page of the two-page, it's some highlighted red, those are units that we, the percentage is over 100% of what was in the contract versus what was actually paid in the construction. Most of that was a result of trying to avoid trees, sheds, trying to save trees with using a higher dollar for it, so furrows under trees, furrows under sheds, whereas, and it's a number of different obstacles that resulted in, up till this point, 100% on the contract. So, the total that we came up with was the, on the front page, the $21,011 that will completely finish, there's just a little bit of excavation left. We're waiting on a easement from the county on the corner of the side lot of the Justice Center, and then just some restorations, cleaning up, setting some boxes will take care of the rest of the project.
Anybody got any questions? So, we're going over budget on this project?
By, it's by $21,000, over the original contract.
Anybody else got any questions?
I make a motion to approve the change order, $21,011 for the Denver-Guthrie Underground Electrical Project. Second.
Francis, you second? Okay. Any discussion? The votes and bids made, we agreed to the $21,011 addition to the Denbury contract, and that was change order number one. Is that...okay? So, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Okay, now, recycling, Larry?
I couldn't seem to get my, I had to update on this, I don't have it in front of me, but we applied for a grant from the Kentucky Division of Solid Waste, recycling branch for another grant this year. Last year, we got, if you recall, the big horizontal baler. If you've been out to the recycling center, Guthrie Opportunities, I think you can see, you can see that in action, it's really quite a machine, and it's going to allow them to process a lot of the cardboard. Along those same lines, for this year, we applied for approximately $30,000, maybe on your iPad, which is maybe updating, but mine is not synchronizing. Approximately $30,000 for cardboard containers. We have the big blue one out in the back of City Hall there, we have four or five of them around town, it's kind of to see how they might work. The way we're collecting commercial cardboard now is we have these spotted at different businesses. Then we have Bobby Young, who does the recycling at the Guthrie Opportunity Center, goes around with a truck, empties them by hand into the back of the truck, takes them to the Guthrie Opportunity Center, goes them on the floor, and they load them into the baler. That's not particularly efficient, but it's the best we've been able to do so far. There is some talk in the, with the new garbage trucks, the front-loading garbage trucks, that we might be able to dedicate a day a week to using that, to clean that truck up, use that, get some different types of containers that will work with that front loader, use those for commercial cardboard, and that would be way more efficient, because then you could pack it into that packer, you could then take the packer to the Guthrie Opportunity Center, unload it, and then baler it from there. It would be a lot more efficient than having one person go around by hand, unloading the boxes, and then unloading the truck once it got there. The Division of Solid Waste has been very understanding and cooperative. If we apply for a grant for one thing, and it turns out that that's not exactly what we need, they'll let us kind of change it around as long as it's not too much different, and as long as it's needed. So, we've put in a grant for these blue containers, but if it turns out that there's another way to do it more effectively during this grant year, then we can certainly do that. And we're appreciative of the state's being so good to us over the years. We've, every year we've applied for a grant, we've gotten one since 2008. There was one year we stayed out, but every other year, we've gotten a grant from them. What we'd like is for, suppose, a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the grant agreement and sign all related documents.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to allow the mayor to sign the paperwork and grants to apply for the 2015-16 Kentucky Pride Grant.
If I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion for the mayor to sign the recycling grant agreement contract with all of the other documentation necessary to fulfill our obligations and yield the floor for a second.
Seconded motion. Any discussion? There's been no discussion. The, we're giving, granting the mayor, how about you saying what you said again?
We're authorized the mayor to sign the contract and the other documents as required for us to get this recycling grant.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? All right. Okay, now, we're going to have to read each one of these. Do you want to read all of them? Just the rest of the... At this time, we'll ask Kathy to read all the recommendations from the HRB.
Okay. This is from the Barksdale Historical Review Board meeting on Tuesday, May 19, 2015. COA 15-11, Nick Kipper, applicant owner proposes to replace door transom and side light glass as well as change the porch floor to composite at 502 North 3rd Street. Recommendation, disapproval of the replacement of the door and transom glass, approval of the installation of gray composite material for porch floor with the condition that the color be administratively approved before installation. Need to strike, COA 15-13, for Mayor McCresso, that one was table. COA 15-16, Sugar Babies, applicant and Natalie Stone owner proposes to install bracketed signs and tables and paint the entrance door at 105 East Flage Avenue. Recommendation, approval of the installation of the sign, tables, and door color as discussed and presented to the board. COA 15-17, Danny and Teresa Reed, applicant owner proposes to install new exterior lighting at 114 West Broadway Avenue. Recommendation, approval of the installation of the two gaslights on the wall and ceiling. COA 15-18, Tommy and Ann Schaus, applicant owner proposes to install new shutters and paint at 217 West Flage Avenue. Recommendations, approval of the installation of shutters or no installation with the final decision being administratively approved, approval of new paint with the condition that the new colors be administratively approved. COA 15-19, Rick and Donna Malino, applicant owner proposes to make exterior alterations and replace windows at 220 West Broadway Avenue. Recommendations, approval of the replacement of materials with the condition that all the materials be administratively approved. COA 15-20, Julie Metcalf, applicant owner proposes to install a window sign at 303B North 3rd Street. Recommendations, approval of the installation of the window sign as presented in alignment with the design guidelines. COA 15-21, DAK Homes, David Kilner, applicant and Charles Gimmely owner proposes to paint and repair the roof and replace window sashes at 117 West Broadway Avenue. Recommendation, approval of the installation of the double window sashes as discussed with the board, approval of red paint treatment only. COA 15-22, DAK Homes, David Kilner, applicant and Charles Gimmely owner proposes to add a new addition at 117 West Broadway Avenue. Recommendation, approval of the addition with the condition that approximately four-foot distance remain between the brick addition and the stucco garage, that the smooth side of the cement board be facing out, and that all the zoning setbacks be met. COA 15-23, Davis Cosmetics, applicant and Laura Asher Howe owner proposes to install a bracketed sign at 115 East Flage Avenue. Recommendation, approval of the installation of the new sign as presented to the board. COA 15-24, St. John AMV Zion, applicant owner proposes to install three handicap access ramps at 217 and 219 East Pershure Avenue. Recommendations, approval of the installation of the three concrete ramps with the condition that the railing will match the black paint that is currently on the church, and that if the layout of the ramp at the rear of the house changes, it should be administratively approved. COA 15-25, Joe Bowman Enterprises applicant and Suzanne Hayden, owner proposes to install pergola at 213 North 4th Street. Recommendation, approval of the installation of the red cedar pergola. COA 14-7A, amended, Scarlett Hibs, applicant owner requests to amend the approval addition in garage at 106 East Broadway Avenue. Recommendation, approval of the amendments to the house addition and garage, including, but not limited to, the attachment of the garage, garage door, and added windows. COA 15-10, amended, Daryl Hawkins, applicant owner proposes to leave the porch off the house at 302 South 3rd Street. Recommendation, approval of the amendment to not rebuild porch with the condition that only a step down to the sidewalk be replaced, not a concrete pad as previously approved.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to COA 15-11, 15-...whoop, 213.
Yeah.
COA 15-11, 15-16, 15-17, 15-18, 15-19, 15-20, 15-21, 15-22, 15-23, 15-24, 15-25, and 14...
78.
78. And, right.
78.
Yeah, 14-78, and 15-10, as recommended. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
It would technically be a motion to accept the recommendations of the Historic Review Board with the conditions it has imposed, unless there's something you all want to alter.
You need a motion? Make a motion to accept as read.
All right, I'll second that motion to accept Historic Review Board recommendations for the before-mentioned COAs with the conditions set forth by HRB.
Well, then, the...
All right, I would just like to insert, on the church over at AMV Zion, they're, they put a couple of handicap ramps, logos on parallel parking there, that I would assume would match these ramps they're talking about on the street. So, I don't know that we have to object at this point, but before we're done, I'd like to have an approval of the city to allow them to paint the handicap parking on our Since it's related, I didn't want to let go until their application, that apparently the board approved.
I don't think...
They don't lead out to the street?
Well, even if they did, Larry, the board, the Historic Review Board would not have the authority to approve...
I know, but if they're...
And the council approving what the board recommended...
Just so it comes up in the same log? Okay. I mean, doesn't have a thing to do with this vote, other than the location of the project.
It doesn't tie your hands.
Okay. The motion made and seconded, we have any more discussion on it? No more discussion? Roll it again, I'm going to let you read your motion.
I second it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have time for that.
Well, how about if I jump in here? I think the motion, because I...the motion was to approve the recommendations of the Historic Review Board as made with conditions that they have imposed on the COAs that have been aforementioned here.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? All right. If there's any correspondence? Everybody's had a copy of the minutes of the last meeting? If there's been no objection, we will adopt the motion to approve the minutes on May the 12th, 2015, since there is no objection, the motion to approve the minutes is adopted as unanimous consent. Okay? All right. This is a special council meeting, actually tomorrow at 5:00 in the council chamber, I want to announce that, following this working session, the media will receive a review of proper notice for this meeting. Tracy, have you got anything you want to add to that?
I'm just ready to talk about the amendment, or is that the solid one?
The next one.
Okay.
Tracy, will we have a hard copy of that meeting tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
All right. The amendment to the vote is left. This is not...
Before I introduce this, I was wondering if we could also kind of discuss the Safety Committee too, because I think these two maybe kind of tie hand in hand. So, if we could...
I agree with Councilman Nolan, that this, they would have a better understanding of the first reading amendment if they had the Safety Committee presentation before the...
So, you want to...
Have a Safety Committee, the committee reports before the first reading.
Well, the only thing that...will that affect your timeline that much, Marla?
For discussion's sake, if Councilman Buckman wants to discuss the committee, we're prepared to do that, just so that the council will have a better understanding of the ordinance that's going to be voted on to amend the budget.
You made a little table check. I'm not table.
He wants to present his explanation of what he meant, or asking for his permission.
Tonight, is that what you want?
Yeah, I think what they're wanting to do is...
Just down to nine.
Yes, to do nine. Yes, to do nine C prior to doing eight A1. And I think that unless there's somebody that objects to that, I think that you can do that. It's basically reordering the business to, again, to address nine C as part of the explanation for eight one, eight A1. So, unless there's someone that objects to that, I don't think there's a problem with you recognizing Councilman Williams and letting him take off.
Sounds like you've got a floor there.
This is the Safety Committee meeting we had on the 21st. It was a long and lengthy meeting about the imminent separation of the Barstown Fire Department and the else kind of voluntary fire department corporation as per se. With that, the expiration of the contract coming up, at that meeting, I reiterated that myself and Councilman Simpson had attended those meetings and that there was no stone on turn and every avenue of approach was made to reconcile and to join those two departments to Nova Bell. So, with that in mind, we're moving forward with separating the two and creating the city fire department. Mayor, I have a timeline that the mayor also presented at that time that shows all the meetings. If anyone's interested, seeing, I have it, shows every date and every time that he met with those individuals and so forth.
Can, can we put a record, have that discussed? Because I found out something today I didn't have enough of.
Look at what he presented me, that's all I had.
Well, I mean, go ahead, I'm just...
Okay. Um... The budget, Chief Hired presented an imminent budget that would have to take the equipment in the fact to bring us up to where we need to be once the separation begins and starts, and this is to get us where we can serve the public after the county moves out. And this is in this budget here, and this is what we were discussing at that time to make the amendment. Be more detailed, I'll turn it over to Chief Hired to do the details on it.
Certainly. What we put together was an immediate needs list that would amass the pieces of equipment that the corporation owns that they would take with them, just so that we can continue to provide the level of service that we need to for the city community. Without going into explanation of each, each one of those, but we're talking about things like a brush truck to be able to extinguish brush fires in areas that we can't service with pumper trucks, a skid unit for that, we're talking about vehicle rescue and stabilization tools that we would be adding to that truck to carry for us for interim time, a temporary tanker that we would purchase, a used unit, just, those are the type of things that we're talking about. So, that was an immediate needs list, and that is the figure that you're looking at tonight to approve an amendment to this budget that will allow us to purchase those needs before June the 30th, when the contract expires, so that we can have those tools in place, ready to go into service should the corporation decide to leave on that July 11 date. And ultimately, I'll kind of leave it there without, as I said, delving into each individual one of those, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I've got a few. And, well, I didn't realize the mayor wasn't going to be here. And first of all, everybody knows I'm not trying to pass any blame or anything, because inquiry minds need to know. What, what, I read an article or something where it said that the mayor was expecting to receive some, some type of information or some kind of adjustment from the corporation as far as the contract. Can you give me some specifics there?
This contract proposal was started, it was realized that the contract, the current contract that we're on between the city and the corporation expired June 30th. So, that discussion started early on in the mayor's seat after he got into office, and he was negotiating with the chairman of the boards. The board had a change in chairman at some point in time that affects some of that timeline that you see there. And ultimately, the contract that originally was discussed, it would have included the consolidation statute that we had talked about and having consultants come in to look at actually consolidating the two departments. That's what we, as the officer corps of the department, had hoped would happen. Apparently, that, those negotiations did not go favorably, they did not meet that timeline as far as set by the mayor to provide him with negotiating that negotiated contract. So, that's where we moved on to an imminent separation and our need to prepare for that is why we constructed this list for the council.
Mayor, I have a question. You indicated contract, are you referring to the old contract? I'm kind of confused.
There is a contract currently in place.
Yes, I know about that.
Yes.
But was there discussion about a new contract?
Correct. Early on, the discussion of the new contract would have had any modifications to the existing contract that needed to take place, and from my understanding, would have looked to include a consolidation statute.
Was this new contract verbal or was it in writing?
They were, there was no contract made, the negotiations were to create that new contract.
I've got a question for our chairperson. The corporation meetings are open, but they do not publicize when they're going to have a meeting. You indicated Bobby, and you attend a meeting, who contacted you guys? I didn't know anything about the meeting, how you guys found out about the meeting?
I attended before I was...
I said, "How did you find out about the meeting?" Because they don't publicize the meeting.
This meeting, we were invited, or mayor was invited to attend these meetings. We were invited by the mayor, or not the mayor, he was councilman at the time.
I said it.
Councilman Rowland was invited by the corporation and the fire department.
You discussed the business without the, we had a present mayor, the mayor had to approve something like that.
I don't know. I was...
The, 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 excuse me, Bill, but the meeting that, that I think that was referred to at the safety meeting, that was just, that wasn't a corporation meeting. That was just a regular fire department meeting and the corporation, the corporation was, was, of course, they all parted the same, and the discussion that I heard was done in that meeting. But it was a regular, uh, fire department.
I indicated a safety committee meeting, I'm going to indicate it again, I am very disappointed in the mayor and who are having all these meetings and not letting the safety committee member, I'm going to safety committee member, I don't even know what's going on. And I'm very upset about it too, I mean, I'm going to tell you like this, I'm very disappointed and I don't think it should have been. Some find out about it and some not find out about it. If we're going to play by the book, we're going to play by the book.
I think they do advertise their meetings on tomorrow. You're on that board, don't they advertise their meeting?
They had not done that up until this past year, when the department of local governments started bringing them into special purpose government entities, and they do now. I, I, I can't tell you when those announcements went out to the media, that was the secretary's job to make those announcements. I'm sorry, but I can't tell you that exactly.
Okay, if I could, if you finish, okay. When we were talking earlier today, you indicated that the mayor, and I've talked to the mayor, the mayor was hoping that the corporation would increase their fee by $11.
My understanding...
And I shouldn't tell the mayor.
Well, there's a couple of different times that were set here. At April, during that portion of time, before April the 15th, was the renegotiation of the current contract and looking at doing the consolidation statute. On April the 15th, that negotiation ceased, that was, that was the deadline that had been set to do that negotiation, and that negotiation was not completed, I guess you'd say. So, the mayor, after that, and this is, I have not been a part of all these negotiations, it's between the city entity and the corporation's board, but my understanding is, he made them a proposal after that, which would have asked that the corporation seek additional funding from the corporation's dues-paying members from the $50 that it is now, $10 in year one, and then a dollar per year for the next...
Eleven in year one?
Excuse me?
Was it eleven in year one?
It would have been, yes, $10 plus a dollar a year for 10 years, which makes it $11 for the first year, is my understanding, and at the end of the 10-year period, they would have been contributing $70.
I can interject, I think there were total four offers made to the, to the committee in behalf of the city, and no counteroffers were introduced back to him at any time.
I thought, was that verbal or something in writing?
It was in writing, I think, the proposal.
In writing?
I, I may have to pick up, I wouldn't interject to that.
What reading, we haven't, what reading, you know, the county member haven't seen the corporate, we don't know what's going on. I mean, I'm telling you all too, we don't know what's going on.
That was a negotiation between the city and the non-corporation.
What did it say?
Have you all ever negotiated with the corporation before?
Two heads, a bell and three heads, a bell and one head.
I think Mayor Sepulveda negotiated that the last time.
But we all knew what we were going to do.
It was in the paper or not?
I ain't talking about the paper, I mean, that's why I've read all my news there, in the paper, I'm more news than the paper, no, it's the council.
I, I, a lot of these questions been asked here, we need the mayor here to...
I agree with him.
And agrees, I mean, again, I'll go back to where we're at, provided it doesn't mess up the timeframe, they would do, the mayor can answer some of these questions.
If I can interject, the conversation that's taken place is absolutely relevant, but we're at a juncture at this point that the separation of the two departments is imminent. From my understanding is that both parties have agreed that, and the corporation has agreed that it is, that it's separated from us. So, that will not change the relevance of, of tonight's motion as we move forward to adopt the ordinance to amend the fire department's budget. Just, I just, we brought this up the minutes of this meeting, and there, I'm sure, is more discussion to be taken care of as we're on this top board topic, or council topic of the meeting. Absolutely, we need to have these discussions, but I just want to interject that we are where we are now, we'll need some action on that, if that helps.
Mr. President, I also have a couple more questions. These all kind of pertain to what we're going to be discussing here. What equipment do we have, currently have, as a fire department?
The city owns a 105-foot aero ladder truck, 50-foot ladder, and a pumper, so three apparatus, three front ion apparatus.
No jaws alive?
We do have a basic set of rescue equipment, we don't call them jaws alive, but that's what everybody knows them as, we do have a basic set of those, but we need to enhance those.
And, I guess I'll go and ask this question here. You're in the firefighting business, and is your opinion that this is a fire you can't put up?
At this time, it does not appear that it is something that can be salvaged. That would be, again, some type of negotiation from the governing bodies that kind of leads me aside from that, but that appears that all favors are in motion for this to happen.
Mr. Chairman, are we at a point of impasse?
I mean, I think we are, I think it's where we need to be. We were putting in what, 1.1 million, and the county corporation's putting in 125,000. I think it's time to move on, let the city build their own fire department and give the, give the city the protection that they can deserve with a 24/7 fire department.
I'm going to make a final, final comment. We need to stop now and talk about the corporation. Those dedicated guys, risking their lives in the city, saving property, saving the taxpayer money, and they save many lives. We need to stop criticizing firefighters.
I didn't criticize, I, I won't go, I did not criticize the volunteer fire department. I think the corporation has done a fine job. I've worked with firefighters for 20 years out here in the cold and rain and all fires and wrecks.
But we need to...
I've got great respect for them.
We need to move on, stop talking about the corporation, move on, we done got up...
You're right, at the time, we need to move on, we need to move on.
What they always say, you can't put the fire out, no one's dying.
That's right.
And in terms of, in terms of tabling this versus taking action, this is first reading on the ordinance. If there's some issue with it, you can always address it in second reading. If you table it now, it does need to come back for first reading and then the second reading, and that would delay it probably too late, would be...
It is, it's time to arrest, and we city council members put in a situation, and, and I mean, I want, we need to buy this equipment because I want to continue maintaining fire service for the citizens of Barstown and saving lives. We have to have that property, I mean, we have to have that equipment, because in the past, we used equipment that the corporation didn't have, and the corporation used equipment the city don't have. We in the situation that we have here.
Mr. President, I also, I don't have any more questions.
Anybody else got a question?
I do. Chief, so today and going forward, or when does this start where the, the city will start maintaining, you know, their fires and things of that nature? Or will you continue to work together to a certain point?
Obviously, even with surrounding communities that we have now in the county, we have mutual aid agreements. So, we would hope that something of that nature would be able to continue so that on those fires that are larger than they can handle, we can render aid to them, fires and incidents that are larger than we would be able to handle, they can render aid to us, that, that's ongoing nationwide, that's, that's pretty standard for fire departments to do aid to one another, and I would definitely hope to continue that.
One more thing. Personally, I would just like to say thank you to the corporation and to the city for all that you guys do. You have serviced me twice, I've had two house fires, and I know that the corporation was there, and then I know that the city was there. So, as, as a citizen, I know that it's necessary for this equipment to be purchased, I would have hoped that we could have remedied things and, and worked with the corporation and the county jointly, but I know that, you know, the equipment has to be needed and that to protect our citizens and the community at best, so.
Anybody else got any questions? Okay, at this time, I'll ask Kathy to read. Okay, at this time, I'll ask Kathy to read.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce proposal ordinance B two thousand and fifteen dash FY two thousand and fourteen dash fifteen, amended budget, and ask for it to be read in the floor.
Ordinance number B two zero five dash fiscal year two thousand and one four dash fifteen, budget amendment. An ordinance amending ordinance number B two zero one four dash thirty-one, the City of Bardstown's amended budget ordinance for fiscal year July first, two thousand and fourteen, through June two thousand and thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Whereas, an annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen was adopted by the City Council of the City of Bardstown on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, and amended on December twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. And whereas, there have been unanticipated changes in both revenues and expenditures during that period of time. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, that section I, the annual amended budget for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen dash two thousand and fifteen B, is hereby amended as follows. One, general fund, fire, increased revenue line forty-nine ninety, transfer in from unrestricted reserves by one hundred and fifty-eight thousand thirty-nine dollars, and increase, increase expense line ten dash zero four hundred dash seven two-two-oh, technical equipment by one hundred and fifty-eight thousand thirty-nine dollars to cover the cost of the equipment needed for the City of Bardstown's fire department when it separates from the Bardstown-Nelson County Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated due to imminent expiration of the contract. Two, combined utilities, garbage, increased revenue line forty-nine ninety, transfer in from unrestricted reserves by thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars, and increase expense line forty-two dash five zero five hundred dash seventy-one eighty, collection equipment by thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars to cover the cost of the premier chipper needed by the garbage department. The current chipper truck is beyond repair, and the workload is behind in schedule. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that bond, of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Okay. There's no vote on the first reading. Okay, how about the nuisance ordinance? We might have one going in, or we have to... The B two thousand and fifteen twelve, chapter ninety-four nuisance ordinance amendment.
Ordinance number B two zero one five dash twelve, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance containing the Bardstown code ordinances, chapter ninety-four nuisances. The City of Bardstown, Kentucky, does hereby ordain that section ninety-four dot zero-three, certain conditions declared a nuisance, L, junk, scrap metal motor vehicles, and M, open burning, be amended as follows. Chapter ninety-four nuisances. Section ninety-four dash, excuse me, ninety-four point oh-three, certain conditions declared a nuisance. It shall be unlawful for the owner, occupant, or person having control or management of any land within the city to permit a public nuisance to develop thereon. The following conditions are declared to be public nuisances. L, junk, insert junked, strike scrap metal motor vehicles, strike, insert the location or presence of any junk, abandoned, discharged, dismantled, partially dismantled, immobile, or otherwise non-operated motor vehicle or vehicles on any lot, trapped parcel of land or portion thereof, occupied or unoccupied, improved or unimproved for more than ten days within city limits, shall be deemed a public nuisance, and it shall be unlawful for any person, whether as owner, tenant, occupant, leasing, firm, or corporation to cause or maintain such a public nuisance or allow the same to be placed, located, maintained, or exist upon his or her, or their own real property. If such a public nuisance is not abated by the owner or occupant after notice given in accordance with this chapter, official action shall be taken by the city to evade such nuisance. Junked vehicles or parts thereof may be restored and disposed of by the city in compliance with KRS three seven six dot two seven five. M, open burning, the open burning of leaves, brush, construction materials, or other debris without specific authorization from the chief of the Bardstown Strike Nelson County Volunteer Fire Department or its designated. Insert violations may result in a hundred-dollar fine per occurrence. All ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby amended to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall make effective being in force upon its passage and publication as required by law.
Okay, I will then take the motion on, uh, the B two thousand and fifteen twelve, chapter ninety-four nuisance.
Make a motion to approve B two thousand and fifteen dash twelve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this requires, uh, in the bench, a vote, uh, counted, patient.
Aye.
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 All right, Kathy, you want to read some more?
Yes.
The second reading on, uh...
Turn it on and off.
Summary of ordinance, B two zero one five dash thirteen, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, cities of Bardstown, Bluefield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating about one-point-zero acre at two-oh-two South Fourth Street from R-three multifamily residential district to P-one professional office district. The Nelson County planning and zoning commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Beginning at the southwest corner of Fourth and Grave Streets and running west to an alley, then south with the said alley to a wire fence, then east with the said wire fence to another wire fence, then north with the last name Wire Fence to a slat fence, thence with slat fence east to Fourth Street, thence north to the beginning. The ordinance or parts of the ordinance is in conflict. Herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. The ordinance shall be in force and effect following publication and summary as required by law.
Second reading, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance B two thousand and fifteen dash thirteen. There will be no discussion. Do I hear a motion or...
I make a motion, accept ordinance number B two thousand and fifteen dash thirteen, read.
Mayor, second?
Second.
Okay, and this, this individual page, within individual vote, Bill, was started?
Uh, aye.
Because of a personal conflict, I'm gonna refuse myself in voting.
Aye. Patient?
Mayor? We're done now, so fire action.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm in order. I'll give you a summary of the Finance Committee meeting on five-eleven, two thousand and fifteen. City engineer Jeff Mills clarified some concerns that Councilman Simpson and I had regarding the hiring of one, the two additional staff members for the sweeps. He agreed that it was more feasible to hire additional staff to perform that function. Director of Public Works and Engineering Larry Hamilton stated that we could conceivably, over a five-year period, save a significant amount of money if we did the work in-house. Jeff Mills also answered the concern that Councilman Hagan had regarding miscellaneous line item in the budget. He felt like it was necessary because they couldn't, um, include everything as a line item in the budget. The mayor informed the committee that due to a recent high-speed chase, that there was a need to add an additional police car to the upcoming budget. Think we now go from four to five. Hopefully, we would include some of that money from insurance. The mayor also made the committee aware that there was approximately twelve Glock forties that had cracked barrels, and so we need to get those replaced. City mayor also informed the committee that it was necessary for Greg Ashworth to, um, go from a, a part-time to full-time position due to some KLC and insurance concerns and some additional responsibilities that the mayor wanted him to take care of. And that kind of summarizes, uh, everything. Unless, uh, Councilman Hagan has something to add.
We need to cover it.
Okay, Francis, you were, Senator Simpson, you...
Yes, we had a cemetery committee meeting. We discussed the budget and maintenance of city cemetery and maintenance of town near cemetery. The committee recommended to the council a motion to amend the cemetery rules and regulations regarding the removal of temporary markers. I think you have that on the agenda there, Mayor Protem. Did I miss anything, Fred and Larry?
I think that's important, Brian.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Okay, does any of the staff have anything to, uh, report? Larry, you done reported on recycling. Did you got anything you want to bring to us?
I don't think that any thought we covered yet.
Marla?
I think we've covered our...
Chief, I noticed you got another booklet out, look pretty good. Did you got anything you want to bring to us?
No, I just want to get it to you all before I make it public, like always. If you have any questions, it's kind of our year wrap-up of what we've done. So, just trying to keep you all in the public informed is what we're doing out there. Other than that, unless you have a question to me, I don't really have anything at this point.
You got anything else, son, you want to bring to us?
No, sir.
But...
Add to the words for tomorrow's meeting.
Jessica?
I think we're pretty current on what's going on.
All right, do you got anything you want to bring to us?
Yeah, I'm at ParkNet, uh, down at the, at this church, um, Brishir. Uh, they painted a couple of handicap places. It's kind of unusual in that, uh, you know, when you're along the street, one place is about as good as another. But there's really no good place, way to take a passenger, if you will, out of a car that has a curb and a hill. So, they're not very bespoke, but yet they want, if they want that, you know, apparently they do, or they wouldn't have gone to trouble me. We're looking to see if it violates any rule. I don't know that, uh, on a manual, uniformed traffic and call revises.
Yes, it's, it's not completely compliant in what they recommend for the spacing of the parking space from an intersection from a stop sign. My only other question that I would have or concern is that if you place a handicap spot on a street, that yet you don't have the appropriate means in order to get that person from the car and a ramp up onto the sidewalk or to the building itself, because there's no ramp from the sidewalk up the hill, because I think there's even a small little, there's pretty severe grade change there. Would that be, I don't know how OSHA would say that, that would even be compliant, you know, with an actual handicap space. But, um, other than that, I mean, they certainly could ask permission to have, there's not, like you said, there's really no great place for it on that street. So, you kind of just do the best you can.
Yeah, I think that's what's going to prevail. The, the rule that Ben Y'all made, Y'all, they mentioned this, they've got a twenty-foot separation between the stop sign so people can see around the corner. In order, if you were thinking of the traffic going on First, North on First, you'd want to be able to see rather than have the car right down into the intersection. But in this case, that isn't so. People on First have the right of way. And in this case, it's, there's a stop sign going east on Brishir. So, if, and the ramp does go down to the corner, they built some years ago. So, if they did take a person out of the, let's say, the passenger side behind the, well, the driver's side behind the driver in the backseat out, you could get somebody out and then take, you'd have to take them down the street and then up the ramp. Otherwise, it's a pretty steep hill there, is why they want it. So, you would crowd down, I mean, I think they put them in about the right place. We'd invite you to look, it's unique. If you have any objections, I'm of the mind to let them have them personally. But if there's some, there's a difference of opinions, apparently. But anyhow, I think they're fine. I think they're okay, I'll say it that way. So, for the intended use, so...
Well, I would add that it's probably not much, anything different than what's been occurring there for a lot of years, parking naturally, you know, for, for Sunday service. So, from that regard, it would be fine. The only question I would have would be from a hazard, from our liability standpoint, because we personally, as a city, didn't paint them on there or give them permission. If someone were to get injured crossing the street because they couldn't see because the car was parked so close, you know, they would maybe complain that the city knew and permitted that. But other than that, it's certainly not creating anything different than what's really been occurring over the years, so...
Can we look at that and make it work some kind of way? Because I, I, I'm not aware of anyone that attends that church that's in a wheelchair, but there are some people that want to be able to park closer to the door. I think that's their intent, but I, I can't really speak to that because I don't attend that church.
Well, I've been there, walking my dog when they did have a handicap, heard roll out on that stretcher, uh, you know, and that they're having a little trouble with that door, you know, they have, anyhow. They've, uh, they've had this on their mind for a good number of years, and I know, I worked with them on the ramp and saw it years ago, so... Unless y'all see something that you want to forbid, I would let it lay, let, let it exist personally. But like I say, if, if there's somebody who brings their attention as a mistake, I do think they probably should have caused, but that being, uh, that, that door's open now. So, anyhow, it's what it is, and y'all can see it, and we'll talk about it later should the need arise.
Kathy, you want to read the municipal order?
Municipal order M two zero one five dash thirteen, the Bardstown City Council, Bardstown, Kentucky, hereby amends the following rules and regulations for the Bardstown Cemetery as recommended by the Bardstown Cemetery Committee. Bardstown Cemetery Rules and Regulations. One, no person shall leave any animal unfastened in the cemetery grounds. No person shall enter the grounds with intoxicating liquor or drive faster than fifteen miles per hour, or ride or drive on the grass, or right or on, or otherwise injure or deface any monument, headstone, fence, or other structure. Two, no person shall plant nor pluck any flower, either wild or cultivated, any tree, shrub, or plant therein, or remove any tree, shrub, plant, or flower without the consent of the public works superintendent or city groundskeeper. Cemetery staff may have the authority to remove plants, trees, shrubs, or other vegetation if need be to maintain and beautify the cemetery. Three, all graves in the cemetery shall be kept flat without any mounds. Four, all bases or other arrangements that are permanently secured to a monument are considered acceptable. Real or artificial flowers are permitted in those spaces. Should real or artificial flowers become faded, detached, ratted, worn, in appearance, or damaged by any other means, the cemetery staff may remove the flowers after notifying owners who have previously contacted the office of the Sexton. Five, the grass areas surrounding monuments shall be maintained solely and under the supervision of the public works superintendent or city groundskeeper. No embellishments to the grass areas surrounding the monuments are permitted by the owners of the needed lot. During the dates of November first through January fifteenth, all fixed arrangements are allowed near or on the monument. January sixteen through October thirty-first, no flower arrangements, toys, balloons, eternal flames, shepherds' hooks, or other loose articles shall be placed on the monument in or on the ground that would cause debris or hinder safety, maintenance, or mowing. Insert six, all funeral home temporary markers placed on new burials will be removed after sixty days. All funeral home temporary markers placed prior to March fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, will be removed. All funeral home temporary markers placed prior to March 15, 2015, will be removed. Seven, insert, the perpetual maintenance care and embellishment of the cemetery before and after the purchase of the deeded lot are under the supervision of the public works superintendent or city groundskeeper. Maintenance of the cemetery will be conducted on a monthly basis except during the mowing season.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to M-2015-13 on cemetery rules.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Officer, if I'm in order, I move to accept municipal order M-2015-13, which identifies the cemetery rules and regulations. Now yield the floor for a second.
Right here, second. I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes. How often do we maintain the cemetery grass and things of that nature?
What is it?
How often?
Can we answer that? There's about 28 mowings, I think, was it? If that's what your question is.
I believe it's every 10 days. Or has it?
Yeah. I thought they had it in excellent shape for the program yesterday, too. It looked, it looked good. They've filled up and mowed them, and ball with it, done, done well.
Philip and Public Works are out there confident. They're there frequent. We have Barry Olson, and we're ball.
Any more discussion? I need to read the motion again, right? Municipal order M-2015-13, cemetery rules and regulations. All in favor, say aye. You have opposed? Aye. Okay, now where was it, Kathy? Now we're with the fireworks, right? Being no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the fireworks special permit for the Kentucky Jail Ministry and the Bardstown Church of God. For no, I'm an objection, the motion to approve these special permits for fireworks is adopted by unanimous consent. Okay. The special meeting, we want to remember the special meeting tomorrow night. Please? Yeah. Then also the council, special council meeting is the 6th, 2nd, 2015, the 4th, 30th, the council chambers. Following the working session, the media will be, will receive proper notice for that meeting. Anybody else got anything I want to say?
Yeah, can we go to item number 12? Okay. Okay. I have a question for the chief. I have a safety concern. It's, it's not really our responsibility, but it's a highway. But when you turn off of Elm Crest Drive, to your left, there's signage, and they have apparently added some more signs to the signage, and it's a blind spot. And you can't, I mean, your line of sight is bad. And so, I am really suggesting that someone, if somebody would check it out, but I had somebody tell me about it, and I went and checked it, and I agree with them. That sign needs to be further toward the BG Parkway and not so close to the corner, because somebody's going to turn out there in traffic. They're going to get hit.
You know, the signs where we put them up were these things?
Oh, there.
I can, our sign administrator brought to my attention, and I'll add there and witness what you said. They've added, gosh, I think it might be Barton Sign, or somebody on the bottom rung of the historical sites, and it's low enough to block your vision if a car's coming out of Elm Crest. You don't see it as well as you would if it weren't there. So, she was going to call the E-Town Highway Department to put that up and ask them if they could put it on a color sign, then jack it up another two or three feet, and that's where it stands.
Item 12.
Started. Get that there.
Did that answer your question, Rob?
It did.
Bill, you got anything you want to bring to us?
No.
Casey?
No.
Brad?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Did I hear a second on that? Sounds like we adjourned. All in favor?